Are we ready? Are we going? We live, I guess we're live.
Well, Jonathan, are you recording? Didn't pop up yet. Popped up to give permission, but it didn't pop up.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, welcome, everybody. This is the last luck boards of Stowe for 2021, December 14th. In the room tonight, we have Jim Salvi, Zach Burns, Courtney Freshen, myself, and Megan Birch-McMichael is on our Zoom. So we'll start with public input. I just want to note if anybody has any comments, please keep them short as we have a very long and full agenda tonight. Is there anybody who want to make comments? I see a hand, Dorothy. Please identify yourself and I'm going to time you for maximum two minutes.
Dorothy Granite, I live at Mike Pond Road. And I just wanted to reiterate my concern that the bylaw regarding extension of use and structure and a previous existing nonconforming reviewed. And I do have concern over the vote last week for the presi license, that one that could be done when there was a letter in the packet going against that from the town council. And the vote was taken with absolutely no discussion, and that concerns me. And that's it for tonight. Have a good holidays, everybody.
Thank you, Dorothy, and you too. Anybody else? Okay, so let's see, just some brief comments. Reminder that Reese Across America, Deb Woods, is coordinating still for this Saturday. She's still accepting Reese to be dropped off at their house at 453 Grape Road. And you can email her Dwoods453@AOL.com if you have any questions or if you want to help. Volunteers, I believe, are still needed for noon at Brookside Cemetery on Saturday. And then the only other announcement I have is that, given the uptick in COVID cases, we are going to be going back to board members only in the room, starting with our January meeting. And we'll continue through the state allowed deadline right now of April 1st, unless things get better, figuring that it's winter and we want to keep everybody safe. So if you're not on the board, we'll ask you to join us remotely. As always, the link will be on our agendas. Any other announcements from the board? Recognition, Jim, I think you had something.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want the board to mark the passing of Penny Garsick, who passed away in, I think, on November 22nd. Penny was not a town official, although I think she volunteered at the COA. But she was one of those people who helps make a town a community. I don't know what she did for a living professionally. I do know she was a native of Long Island and New York, like I am. But she made her mark on this town largely by helping families who are experiencing very challenging healthcare challenges with their relatives. She would act as a healthcare, home healthcare aide or a companion. I met her that way about 11 years ago when my father needed those services. She was terrific. And I think there are innumerable families in town who she helped through similar crises. And I'd just like us to mark her passing.
A role lost to the town. Absolutely, thank you, Jim. Any other recognitions tonight? Okay. So the first items on the agenda are some appointments to new police detectives. They're here.
Good evening.
Chief, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Come on in.
Don't be shy.
You guys can sit down.
Yep. I'll take it from you.
Okay. So with many of my presentations that I start off with, due to movement over the past year and replacement of officers and succession motions, opened up the position of two detective positions that we have within the department. In 2009, I was one of the detectives working with Steve Bernie Sturtevant. I'm sure a lot of you remember him. And after he was, after he retired, I got promoted to detective sergeant. That opened up another position in which Cassandra Scott, who's now a sergeant, filled that role. And since her promotion now, and my promotion now, we have two openings. We did start off a process back in November, early November, not early November, sorry, late November, where an announcement was made, a posting was made. Officers who were eligible had the ability to apply. And they send in a cover letter and resume. And then they were each given an essay question to fill out and then submit that along with their, what they considered their best police report. That was reviewed by myself, the town administrator, and the assistant town administrator. We were able to conduct interviews. And out of those interviews, Officers Fitzpatrick and Officer Kush came out and I'm recommending them per the contract as, you know, the candidates for detective. They've both gone through some training. They've both gone through training over the past years that they've been within the department. Each of them has taken up a specialty. And they've continued on with their training and moving forward in the department and best to serve the department. This is going to be able to give them more of an opportunity with their additional training to serve the community and to really take cases to the fullest. So I'm recommending to the board these two fine officers.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
Jim, anybody? Sounds good. I'd love to hear from you guys, maybe just sort of how you got into the police work and... You're welcome to take off your... Yeah, you can take off.
Just quickly, I mean, I did criminal justice for undergrad. And it was something I knew I wanted to do for just trying to find a way into law enforcement. It kind of just stuck, so fortunate to be here.
Great, glad to have you. And where'd you grow up?
I'm from the city. I'm from Boston.
Awesome, great to have you.
Thank you.
Same as Officer Fitzpatrick. Went to school for criminal justice, graduated with bachelor's or master's in that, went into the police academy and worked for a year in Hubbardston, and here I am now.
Great, well, it's great to have you both. And Denise, you recommended this approval.
I do, it's an assignment by the chief. But Dolores and I both participated in the process and I support the recommendation.
Great. Any other questions from the board? If not, I will take a motion.
I would just say that
Yes.
Those of us who've had the opportunity to take the Citizens Police Academy, one of the things you learn is what it means to be a detective and what it means to be a detective here in Stowe. So I just want to thank the two of you for stepping forward. I know it's a big job, a lot of responsibility, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I will make a, do you want them together, Madam Chair?
What? Yeah, I guess we can do it in the exact same position, so sure, yeah.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Brenda Fitzpatrick and Christopher Kush to the position of police detectives to the Stowe Police Department through June 30th, 2023.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And Megan says aye. Great, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Echo, thank you for stepping up.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you very much. And just to give a plug, we are going to be running the Citizens Academy. It's coming up in February. What4 will be posting it next week. And if there is a posting on our website already, but there'll be more information out next week. So thank you.
Terrific, great, thanks, Chief.
Happy holidays.
Thanks, you too. And then we have one more appointment. Is Steve on the call?
No, I told him that it needs to be done. Everyone was more than familiar with Steve.
Yeah, so Steve Jelenek has offered his, himself, as a member of the Stowe Housing Authority, to fill an unexpired term through the May 2022 election. We, I think many of us know Steve as the Chair of Capital Planning. And his letter, he stated he's also the Stowe Coordinator for the Habitat Project. I can't remember what the town, there's some, for the Habitat Project in Stowe, he is the town coordinator. So he's got interest in affordable housing as well. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, then I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Steve Jelenek to the Stowe Housing Authority to fill an unexpired term until the May 2022 town election.
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. The Housing Authority thanks you. Town administrators' report.
Yes, I don't have too much since we covered a lot last week. One thing I wanted to run by the board is we've talked about the need for a bylaw review committee. More specifically, we desperately need to update the personnel bylaw, which is a component of our bylaw. I wanted to know if the board would be comfortable with Dolores and I'm making a recommendation to this board to rewrite the personnel bylaw so that we can get that moving while we wait for a full bylaw review committee. There are stuff that is clearly outdated. There are stuff that is not the current law. And it needs a lot of work. So we would like to start going through that and trying to make some updates to get, potentially get that ready for spring town meeting, if you are okay with that.
Seems important to keep that up, right. And remind us, just since we're talking about the bylaw committee, that's appointed by the moderator? I always, I know, no, this one. So if people are interested in being on the bylaw committee, we've been waiting for enough people to move forward on this. So if there's anyone out there interested in joining that committee, please let the office know.
Yes. And then, just a brief update. LCAC has been going through the contract negotiations with Comcast for the cable renewal. They are hoping that after the first of the year, they will have a draft for you. It's, they've done some negotiating with Comcast. It's back in Comcast's hands to try and get a final go before it comes before you all to approve and sign. I just wanted to cover some of the highlights of what they're discussing right now. The current franchise fee of 4.75 would stay the same, which means there's no change in the fee for the Stowe customers. They would be providing one HD channel to go along with our two SD channels, which would be great so that we can broadcast in HD. They would be updating our encoders and decoders from analog to digital at a cost of approximately $15,000. That will increase the quality of the broadcast of the current channels. Capital funds are currently 83,333 over the course of the 10 years. They would look to increase that to 96,000, paid at $9,600 per year for the 10 years. It is viewed as one of the best deals in the Commonwealth at that $9,600 per year. The expectation and the hope, I would say, is that Verizon would at least match that in their contract negotiations when that contract comes up. And finally, we've been talking about a buyout of the current iNet system. Currently, if you're all familiar with the way the old iNet works, it connects the municipal buildings. We're looking at buying that out from Comcast. They would pay us $31,000 to decommission it with the hopes that we will then apply those funds to run fiber between the buildings, which is a much more efficient and high-speed connection, would allow us to do a lot of redundancy between the buildings. That's sort of the second phase. But that will be more than just a benefit to Stowe TV. It would benefit, you know, data transmission. Eventually, we could do one phone system, cameras, things like that, that could all be interconnected through the buildings. So they, so that is what they're focusing on. The majority of the contracts, as you may know, is sort of standard boilerplate language. So this is really what it comes down to. So we're hoping to hear back from them soon, and we'll have that on your agenda in the near future. Still plenty of time. It does not expire until next November, I believe, November 22. So plenty of time to get this worked out, but just a brief update on where that stands.
And that's Comcast.
That is Comcast.
And is Verizon on a same schedule or...
On the same schedule. Yep. And that's all I have for you all this evening.
Any questions, Randy?
Did you want to mention the library building thing? That was since the seventh.
Yes, it was. Library building committee met last week. They unanimously selected option C, and which is the teardown of the 1970 version and building a smaller, more efficient addition. I would have to say, I mean, I agree. I think that makes the most sense economically and for what their purposes are. We have some work still to do with the architects. We're looking for some additional rendering so that we can put some better drawings out there so people will get a better view of what the building looks like all around. And then, after the first of the year, they're going to start really with the focus on getting it ready to go to town meeting, getting the word out. It is on our website. We have the page dedicated to the project. As meetings come up, we put the presentations there. We put the links to the videos on there, so it's one-stop shopping. But I encourage folks, if they haven't yet gone on and educated themselves on that project to do so. It'll be an exciting few months to see where that project goes and to get it ready for town meeting and ultimately the ballot. Tina is on your January 25th agenda to come here and actually present, you know, that proposal to the board. You will have to formally vote to place it on the ballot. So she is coming in. She'll also give an update on the library in general at that meeting.
Is that, that's separate from a CPC recommendation? I mean, in terms of being on the ballot, it would be on the ballot regardless of...
Correct.
Or, and there'll be two items essentially, potentially, is that right? There'll be one part of funding from CPC and then one for general town funds? On the ballot? No, I'm sorry, at town meeting.
Yes, so town meeting, well, so town meeting, the expectation would be that that article, provided CPC approves funding, would be structured similarly to Stowe Acres and Hallpoint. There would be a menu of funding sources, fundraising, CPC funds, donations. And then the remaining balance would be borrowed.
Right, great, terrific.
Yes.
And it is expected that the general fund contribution would be on the ballot?
Yes, right.
Yeah, and I'll just say, that presentation that they did, I can't remember what the date was, but it's terrific. People, and I know Stowe TV posted it again today, so it's worth watching, even if they have already voted on the third option to see how they got to there.
Yep.
Great, great. Okay, let's see. So first up is Bill Hewig?
Hewig.
Sorry, Bill, is with us. He's our town attorney. We got Bill?
Yep.
So he's going to give us an update on litigation, where we're at at this point in the year with various issues in town. Bill, I will turn it to you.
Thank you, Madam Minister. Can you hear me?
Bill, you're coming through a little staticky.
I'll try and get closer. Is that better?
A little bit.
It's a little bit. It's just, it's, it's, yeah, a little choppy. But go ahead, well, let's try it if we can understand you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and I'll speak slowly. My apologies, my laptop is, the color went out. And so I have to use audio here instead of the video, and my laptop would be better. I'll begin with the Parrisho versus Board of Health case. As you know, that was a case under which five other plaintiffs sought judicial review of Board of Health disposal system construction permit to Habitat for Humanities project of two affordable housing units located on 1.2 acres of land. The application for the disposal system construction permit was submitted in October 2017. The board conducted a very meticulous process that lasted three years of public hearings, seeking and getting input from others, and finally, in 2019, issued the permit. The others brought a claim, brought a suit. And among other things, they are alleging fear of contamination of their wells. We believe that the others are not correct and that their claims do not have any merit. Their allegations that their wells will be somehow polluted are based on what we consider to be the wrong soil logs. And their claims are, in our opinion, very much exaggerated. At present, both parties have filed their briefs in court. And search drawing actions such as this, the parties rely on the record that was produced by the board. And in this case, the Board of Health record was an excellent record from which to go into court. Both parties have prepared their, as I said, both parties have prepared their briefs seeking judgment on the pleadings, meaning that the court will allow to decide who is correct, either the others or the town. Presently, the hearing is set for June 2022. And that's the current status of the case. There is no action required between now and June other than to prepare for the hearing on that date. It is, I don't have the date in June, I think it's the 20th, June of the year 2022, coming up in six months. So that is the status of that case. The second case, I would report to you, I meant to tell you that the case is being handled by Amy Quetzal of our office, who is one of the best land use attorneys in the Commonwealth. We believe that the town's case is strong and has merits and ought to prevail when the court issues its judgment and decision in June or July. Second case, Town versus Howard Stein Hudson Associates. This is a suit, as you know, that began in September 2019 in Middlesex Superior Court. It originates from a contract the town had in March of 2014 for engineering design services for approximately 225 feet of a stretch of Stowe Lower Village Road, which is Route 117. HSH Howard Stein Hudson, in their design proposal, originally proposed one type of bottom occasion and overlay design, but later changed that to overlay only with no milling. Under the contract, HSH was obligated to develop and present to the town a design plan that was suitable for construction, that met applicable professional and state DOT standards, that would advise the town of the data needed to construct the project and would advise the town of design and engineering services reasonably to be needed. We got HSH's design plan in September 2014. And the plan, we learned, had a number of problems and difficulties. It was insufficient data. We believe it did not comply with proper surveys and proper investigations sufficient to advise the town on the project. There were errors in things such as sloping and elevation which resulted in drainage problems, which we later had to correct. It did not meet, in our opinion, the professional or state DOT standards of review required of such an agreement. As a result, the town had to redesign and to reconstruct the, and make improvements over the original design project that HSH proposed. The town had agreed international to redesign and reconstruct at considerable expense. The suit was brought in Middlesex County Superior Court. It was brought in 2019. And the current status is this. Rick Holland of our office is conducting the case, is handling the case. He's one of the top construction litigators in the Commonwealth. And we are in what is called the discovery phase of the case. We have exchanged documents and of course documents in a construction case of extensive. We have exchanged interrogatories, which are written questions and answers. And Rick is now in the process of conducting depositions of HSH engineers. Rick has completed four days of deposition of their engineers, and he has six remaining engineer positions of HSH personnel to conduct. Discovery has a concluding date of February 2022. When we conclude Discovery, Rick intends to get us into a position where we will be able either to attempt to settle the case or perhaps refer to mediation to avoid further litigation expenses. I said Discovery concludes February. I correct myself, the Discovery conclusion date is March 2022. That is the stance of the HSH case. The third case that I reported to you in the litigation report is a case about which we have a passive role and take no active interest. It's the Kim Fisher versus Justice Zonin, yeah, the Zonin Board of Appeals. Kim Fisher versus the Zonin Board of Appeals. That is a fight between others, property used for non-commercial, nonconforming uses. The complaint is that zoning bylaws are being violated and not properly enforced. And some of the complaints include unlawful car dealership, allegations of unlawful expeditions, unlawful lending, unlawful parking, unlawful parking, unlawful access to right of ways, managgis orders, and those sorts of things. The DCA decision against the presi business was upheld by Superior Court in January 2020. The Fishers have now appealed for further appellate review to the Supreme Judicial Court. We have not taken an active role in any of this at any point. We have assumed a passive role throughout. And when the case was appealed to the Supreme Judicial Court for further appellate review, we so advised the court that we would continue our passive role. And that concludes my report on the currently active litigation cases. I'd be happy if you take your questions.
Questions, Jim?
Bill, thank you. I was primarily interested in the Howard Stein Hudson case. You pretty much told me what I wanted to know. I don't have a question so much as a comment to the chair, I guess, and maybe for Bill. With Discovery ending in a few months, I have a feeling that maybe we could benefit from a fuller and freer discussion in executive session sometime in the first few months of 2022.
And I would recommend that that would, would that include the planning board?
Probably. Yeah.
And we, I mean, I don't, legal wise, I don't know when the right timing is. But if Discovery isn't expected to finish until March, we have time, right? We'd do that before that point. I'm not sure.
Yeah, Bill, what would you suggest as far as having a, an executive session to discuss this case in more depth?
Yes, I think, I think that's an excellent idea. You can discuss strategies, probabilities of success, and those sorts of things. You can discuss strategies, probabilities of success, and those sorts of things. And you can include anyone within the town or anyone who has an interest in it in the executive session. So I think it's an excellent idea. And a good idea because we are approaching the conclusion of Discovery in this case. And so Rick would be able to fully evaluate for you what he's learned through Discovery.
So we, so we should wait till Discovery is completed?
Yes, that's my recommendation, and that would be in March.
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments? Megan? Nothing? Okay, great. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate the update very much.
You're welcome. And, everyone, sorry about my computer problems.
It's okay. Thank you for speaking slowly. It worked great.
It worked fine, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, the next item is to follow up on the discussion we started last week about the ARPA funds and the process for deciding about spending. Denise, any, any feedback from the committee, from the members of the board?
No.
Yeah.
No, I haven't spoken to anybody really about this since last week. Just two, well, maybe one thing I wanted to add. I did reach out today to our auditing firm to have them go through and double check the calculation that the consultant put together for the revenue replacement. Just before we really get into spending that, they'll be the ones that certify the audit anyways and have to confirm that. So I sent them all the documentation from the consultant. They will go through and confirm or make adjustments to that accordingly. But otherwise, I have heard from a number of different people looking for projects, how to submit things, how to get their name on the list. I will just say, just because it came up last week, the idea of public input actually was on the magic. Magic had a managers meeting yesterday morning about ARPA. The majority of the communities that are in Magic that participated have not done anything. They're all sort of in the same boat. They're trying to figure out what the best process is. Except for Sudbury, which I found was funny. So Sudbury received about five million dollars in funds. And they received more than fifty million dollars in requests when they put a public outreach first. So they, they narrowed that down to duplicates and came up with about thirty million dollars in requests. So they are trying to figure out how to deal with that at this point. But otherwise, the other communities are all just, you know, trying to figure out what the best way to go about this is and how to spend the funds effectively.
So my feeling is that the best process would be that you pull together a rep from each of the, basically finance, capital planning, and this board. And, and sort of talk and, you know, sort of work through a little workshop of what, what the best, you know, possibilities are and come back with proposals. I mean, that's, I think that that's, you know, short of having all three committees back together again and have a wide open discussion. It just seems like that's, you know, you particularly know the best list of needs, I think, at this point. And capital planning and finance have been talking about a lot of those same items. So it seems like that would be. Any other thoughts at this point from members of the board?
Sounds to me.
Zach?
I think I'm more of a fan. I'm not against, I think, a vetting, good vetting process. I would like to see, I think, this board try to lay out some guidelines of how we'd like things to be spent just to, you know, guide that recommendation coming back to meet what that looks like. And I'm, I'm never scared of receiving thirty million and, and if that's the request, because at least it helps us then put it, put it all on a list and start prioritizing and, and having folks in town understand, you know, what we're trying to balance. And maybe helps us find some projects that we don't know about but should know about. But it's, it's one where I think having some guidance from this, this board could be helpful to that, that sort of vetting committee to come back with. Because I think we had some interesting ideas at the last meeting about maybe some, some smaller categories that could, you know, help guide that process. And in light of the fact that most communities haven't really figured out a process yet, because we get, we have some time, I think it may be worth spending that time just making sure that we, we give that guidance for the committee to, to vet. So I guess I have a slightly different process, but I think it sort of integrates in what you're, you're suggesting of a vetting process.
So we could have a discussion among ourselves around sort of some parameters that we'd like to see.
Yeah, as a, as a board, you know, since, since we're the ultimate, in this case, the ultimate, say, of, of the money. And so I think giving some parameters, letting the committee operate and come back and say, this is how we think is best to meet, you know, the parameters the board gave, which I, I think is a, a nice balance between the two.
Well, and I would agree, I think, I think because ultimately it's this board who will decide what projects go forward. I think at a minimum, we should establish some parameters for gathering that data. So if it's, you know, we mentioned last meet, last week, that, you know, it's important to sort of tie these projects to a department that will then own the, you know, future expenditure, the future maintenance, because we need to make sure that people aren't just applying for projects. We say yes, and then no one keeps them up or no one budgets for them accordingly. So I do think that this board should, and I can get some examples or I can put something together that we can look at. But I think this board should decide sort of what the criteria is to apply. And then we can decide how wide or narrow that process should be. But that should also, in addition to maybe goals of what priorities you want to see covered, I think putting together sort of a process and define that process will be an important step before we really start accepting or soliciting proposals.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not a fan of the, the wide open Sudbury model because I think it's just raising unfair expectations that people think, oh, you know, I get a say in this when, let's be real, I mean, they're not going to all get their favorite project. I'd rather have this discussion around some parameters that, both in terms of what you're saying, you know, for, make sure that it's owned somewhere, but also that, you know, if, if we want to do X number of projects that are, you know, on the table now versus things that might be, you know, whether it's the Green Committee or Public Art or whatever. So I can tell you want to see, yes.
I'm just looking up. I'm just paying attention. Two things. Number one, so for purposes of, of the minutes, I think what we're talking about is a working group pulled together by the town administrator of whoever she thinks is appropriate. But second, I agree with some sort of process for input from this board. I would like to see that start with a draft from the town administrator just so our discussion is focused and, you know, lasts a reasonable length of time as opposed to us just freestyling. But I, I agree with that.
Phil, did I have anything substantive to add?
So it sounds like, and Megan, any additional thoughts?
No, I, I think if we have some time, which is what it sounds like we do, I would like to spend that time really being thoughtful about how we spend it. So I think, you know, having the discussion for us. I think, you know, when we were talking about it last week, you know, my gut reaction was, sure, open it up to everybody, like, I, I understand the, the difficulties with that. I've thought it over a little bit more. But I do think that, that if we have some time, I would like to really be able to sort of think holistically about where the money goes and how.
Yeah. Right. So we do, we do have time, so there's, there's no reason to rush into this. So, great. All right, so that gives us a framework, I think, to, to move forward on this. We'll figure out when we can bring it back. We're already having a full January schedule, so it might not be in January.
Yeah, so the, the funds have to be allocated by, I think it's December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and they have to be fully spent by twenty twenty-six. So we have to have all the projects approved and granted by the end of twenty twenty-four, so.
So we definitely have time, definitely have time. Some of them won't be on the board by then.
I'm sorry. We were saying you're talking about one point five million dollars.
No, it's the whole two point one.
Okay.
It all falls under the same bucket. The difference is there's more latitude with the one point five and how it can be spent.
That's right. It just isn't that much money.
When you start spending it, it's really.
Yeah, no, right, right, exactly, right.
Be unpleasantly surprised.
Okay, the, the Oars item is, is no longer active, so we're going to pass on that. We don't need to move no action or anything, right? So we'll be hearing more about it probably next month. I've never known, Nick Rush Spirits, Colonial Spirits of Stowe, we have a manager, change of manager application. And I know, I see Mary Lou and I saw Len, Nick Rush. I hope I'm not totally making a mess of your last name. But, so I don't know, basically, this is an ABCC rule that we need to officially have the right person who's managing the store on the license. So this is a, a request to change the name from, I believe it's from Leonard Nick Rush now to Mary Lou. Is that right? Because I don't have it, I have too many windows in front of me. Oh, that, that's right, that was somebody else.
Carol School.
Okay. But we got the right paperwork now?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that's not, that's employer. I don't have the.
It was, I think it was on there somewhere. I remember seeing it, I just.
Oh, Leslie Scott Wilson is the last approved manager that's on record with the ABCC.
Okay. So we have the new paperwork, which is all signed in our packet. Mary Lou, do you want to add anything? Does anybody have any particular questions for them? Any questions? No?
No, Mary Lou, you're on mute. I can unmute you if you'd like.
I did it. I think I did it.
Yep, we got you.
We can hear you.
It's just a simple change, just to make sure the documents are all above board and accurate.
All right, so if there's no questions, I think we can just move to a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the liquor license change of manager application for Nick Rush Spirits Inc., DBA Colonial Spirits of Stowe.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. All set. Thanks, Mary Lou. Thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
And next is an update from the Board of Health. Mary Lee, thanks for joining us, and I see Marcia's also on the call, but.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for including us or asking us to work with you on this. So did you receive the report that I had developed?
We did.
Yes.
Yes, yes, thank you.
So at the last Board of Health meeting, which was on the second, actually, we did discuss at length about the, a possible proposal for mask mandate for the town of Stowe. So I was thinking about, if we're talking about following the science, what types of statistics might guide us to, to decide whether or not to do that. So I pulled some statistics together. They are from last week, and of course, as you know, COVID, it changes quite quickly. But I think it gives you a pretty good picture. So first of all, to look at the number of cases. And the way the state reports it's a little unusual, but it talks about a fourteen day case average, average cases. So for Stowe, Table one A shows you the number of cases. You see how it varies. It went thirty-three, then dropped to fourteen, fifteen, then down to twenty-nine. I think what is a little more telling is the second table because that really show, I compared, this is done, this is an incidence rate. So it's, it adjusts for population. So you can look at the different towns and really compare the, the occurrence of COVID. And so you can see, I mean, Stowe is, we're kind of, we're kind of up at the top on the eighteenth. But then if you look on the twelve nine, we're, we're kind of in the middle with other towns. I grabbed the towns around us just for comparison. But Stowe's was twenty-nine point nine, the incidence rate on the ninth. Hudson, fourteen point one, Lancaster, forty-four, Bolton, twenty-six point six, and Mayfair, thirty-seven point one. So we're, we're kind of in the middle there. Any questions about those tables or? Okay, page two, I think, is what really, I think, is where the discussion really comes in. Because trying to, the other thing I thought is maybe looking at positivity rates and whether or not that would make a difference. That would, towns that have a mask mandate, are their positivity rates lower? And of course, there's no clear answer, really. Again, it's kind of, about half of them are lower than Stowe and half of them are higher. I did grab the positivity rates for, that came out on the ninth, which you don't have. They're all significantly higher. Everybody went up. Stowe went from two point eight on the second to four point six two on the ninth. But then all of the other ones did too. So Sudbury's three point three from a one point eight eight. Lutheran went down a little bit to four point three six. Westwood went up to almost seven.
I got it. Can you see? I'm just, I'm just putting up your chart.
So I'm just reading here the ones that I grabbed today. So Bedford's two point oh four, they're, they're up to three point six one. Lancaster went from that four point seven five to seven point three six. And Lincoln went up to one point eight eight. So everybody, which isn't surprising after the holiday. We kind of expected that. And of course, we are facing another holiday. So we talked about the masking, you know, a mask mandate. And certainly from this, we're not seeing a strong indication that it cuts back on, on, on COVID cases. The other thing too is that when we talked to the, our health officer, Jim Greffey, he, he pointed out that most of the cases they're seeing are within families and family parties and get togethers, which of course, the mask mandate wouldn't probably help very much. So that was kind of what we looked at. We also, is interesting, I had an opportunity to talk to the, the director for public health in Sudbury today. And he's, they have a mask mandate. I knew that they had horrendous pushback. I mean, like four hundred phone calls to the Board of Health over it. It was not, it didn't go easily. And he said, in retrospect, he, if they had it to do over again, they probably wouldn't have done that. They would have approached it differently with putting out something maybe like a, and I thought this was kind of an interesting idea. Like the, the Select Board and the Board of Health strongly advised the use of masks or something like that. That was one suggestion. The other thing I think that we talked about that needs to be, we have to consider enforcement. If we do decide to do a mask mandate, who's going to enforce it? Certainly, it's not something that our health department has the ability to do. It's, would be very difficult. And even when they had the statewide one, and we were meeting, we, we still meet weekly, the Boards of Health, all the Boards of Health for the state, with the Department of Public Health. And they have the representative from the police, the state police on that. And they did not recommend, if you do have a mask mandate, having any frontline workers enforcing it because of the pushback and the problems, and that it could be a danger to them. So that, it does leave that wide open, I think. So I don't know if you have other suggestions or thoughts on it?
Well, I think you're right that if we could just strongly recommend it, you know, for people. I mean, the same way, I don't know if you were on the call when we've decided to, to keep public out of our meetings starting in January, just because it's winter and the buildings closed and, you know, air quality is not what it is during the warmer weather. So, but I think that's all, you know, that's probably what we should be doing, you know. You know, Board of Health can say it, we'll support you saying that. Or I, I would presume that our board would support you saying that. And just, I know, I think you said in your memo that, you know, it does seem like there is a fair amount of mask wearing in stores.
Yeah, I think so.
Not a hundred percent, but it's, you know, it's, there's clearly some stores that are still got the signs up saying, please wear your mask when you go in, so.
And we do have a very robust vaccine rate, so that, which is wonderful. So that also, I think, helps protect our residents.
I actually had a question on, on that, that chart, which we've been seeing for a while now. It still is only talking about one shot. It's not, it doesn't seem to be tracking for the two shots or even the booster. Is that, I don't, I mean, I know that's our regional health group that's doing that, or maybe it's even the state.
Right, you know, let me, I can get that information. It does say that. I, I wonder if that's an error, because they do track fully vaccinated.
I would think at this point, right, they.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
I will send, I will get that information. I may even. Um, I will send, I will get that information. I may even be able to pull it out before the end of the meeting in that manner.
Um, other questions and people have for Mary Lee or the Board of Health?
No, but the, so the chart we have on our website has fully vaccinated as well.
Oh, it does?
Mm-hmm. That's what I thought.
You have to look all the way to the right if you're not scrolling over.
Maybe that's one of my problems.
So it has one dose, then it has fully vaccinated.
The one in in the report, though, I had the same question. It looks like it's just one.
In the report possibly, but we get a weekly report from uh Jim Greffey, and it does include fully vaccinated.
And what are we? Do I have them?
Um, well, so we just updated it today with last week's number. So current cases in Stowe are up to thirty. Um, the current positivity rate is four point six two in Stowe, and we are seventy nine percent fully vaccinated ages five and up.
Well, that's excellent.
That is excellent. Great.
So are you seeking a strongly advises notice from the Board of Health? That would be from the S- work, Select Board and Board of Health?
Um, I, we haven't, we haven't taken that vote internally. I, I mean, I personally think that would be great if the Board of Health would would come out with that, just because I think it, it, you know, you all are the ones that are closest to it. I mean, we're, so um.
And we'll, we'll have a meeting in Janu- we, our next meeting's in January. I mean, obviously, if there was a huge change, we would meet and look at this. But I'll certainly bring that back to the January meeting.
Um, and the other question I had, and I think I was looking at the current website, was around um particularly for testing. It seems like with people traveling, if if there's um information that's more current on where people can go to get current tests, you know, especially if they're coming into town or been away and come back. Um, I I just heard this morning that so there's a place in, on um Powder Mill over near the Stop and Shop, I guess, that you can get tested pretty quickly. Um, but if if you all have resources, I think it would be great to add that. The information I saw on the website seemed to be from last year when we were even pre-vaccinated. Which might be.
I will check, but it's the state website, which really is, I think, the most up to date.
Okay.
That link is usually, I believe is on the website, but I will double check.
Okay.
And so you said there was one over there by the uh.
It's somewhere, there's some sort of um, uh, uh, what do you call this? You know, sort of drop in, not a clinic, but a drop in emergency care or something? I don't know exactly what it looks like. Someone just mentioned that they went over there to get a, a test because their office was having an outbreak, so. Just made me think. It'd be good to know. Yes.
So the link on our website under the COVID page just goes right to the state, which is constantly updated. I can move it up to the higher on the page, um, but the link itself still goes just directly to the state's testing. Uh, because we don't get that, I mean, it's so widely available now, we don't get updates on.
Right.
Um, but now they have, they actually just added, uh, they just added the self-test distribution and how to go about that. We are not one of the communities that are eligible at this point for self-tests. But um, but they did just update their website with that.
Right.
And I think that I really give a plug for that website because it has an interactive map. So you can quickly find the ones near you. Um, and just as an F Y I regarding the self-testing, has the states really come to realize that that's kind of the wave of the future and that we are not going to have really accurate numbers as far as the number of people that are positive? Um, they just, this week opened up that notification in your phone. People that self-test can now enter it in there and send it out. So I think that's a real, a wonderful move in the right direction, so.
Great, yeah.
Things are changing. Well, thank you very much. I will take that back to the Board of Health in the January meeting.
Thanks, Mary Lee. Really appreciate you joining us tonight. Any last questions? All good?
Just one thing.
Yes.
It's actually related. I don't have any reason to question what the Board of Health is doing here. This looks like a very reasonable course of action to me. I'd like to take up at some point something that I think is more directly in our jurisdiction that we, we touched on only briefly a few meetings ago, which is vaccine mandate for uh town buildings. You know, we, we do have, um, we invite the public in here, and I think it would be nice to be able to say that the town government is doing every, and town employees doing everything they possibly can to make it a safe environment. On the other hand, I'm very interested in hearing the management challenges. Um, I haven't made up my mind on this, but I would like some time to discuss it.
That's right.
Yes, so I did not put it on tonight's agenda for two reasons. One, we were filling up, and I knew that that would be a more thorough um discussion. And every sort of week that goes by, we get copies of other communities that have implemented it or that have struggled with it. So Dolores and I continue to look at those resources, look at the policies that are put in place. Actually talked at length to the West Tisbury Town Administrator yesterday. Uh, they implemented one and they um are still sort of trying to um assess the fallout. They had a handful of employees that they're still trying to figure with. They actually did not allow for any weekly testing either. Um, so it's, it's really different from community to community. Um, but I, we definitely will have something to put forward. Um, the expectation is that after the holidays, um, the courts will hopefully resume on the discussion with this, and there'll be some movement as far as the OSHA mandate. But we plan to have something regardless that will need some time to discuss and digest.
Okay, thank you.
I put it on the list. I had that on my list to ask you about that update, so thank you for bringing that up. All right. Thank you, Mary Lee.
Thank you, Mary Lee.
You're welcome.
Okay, so now we have a very long list of liquor license renewals. So I just want to, just for a public reminder, um, there's a number of these. These are all renewals. There are not, this is not a public hearing. These, um, at this point, if there's concerns about any of them, it's really about enforcement. Um, some of the letters we received had nothing to do with the liquor license itself, but other issues on that, on those businesses' properties. So um, that's an enforcement issue, not, not a license issue. Um, and with that, I think we're just going to go down the list. Do we, do we, let's see, the motion was written to, to put them all in one, correct? So.
Yes.
Um, so why don't you make the motion, and then I'll see if there's any questions from the board on any of them?
Sure. I guess I should ask first, does the town administrator have any suggested conditions on any of these before I, so I don't want to do this again?
Um, not on these first eleven, no.
These are just the liquor license renewals first.
So these are liquor license and the C Vs that accompany a liquor license. So for those businesses that serve on premises, suffer from package stores, are required to have a C V, they're required to serve food. So um, these, so just to clarify, we did um common victrola licenses at our last meeting that were standalone. Um, there's another category tonight that are standalone. The first section, they go hand in hand with their liquor license.
Okay. So, uh, Madam Chair, I move to renew the town's twenty twenty two liquor licenses for the following businesses and their respective common victrola licenses and approve the release of said licenses only upon a satisfactory inspection by the building department. S- one, Stowe Food and Beverage LLC, Stowe Acres, fifty eight Randall Road, on premises, all alcohol and common victrola. Two, J Malone and Sons, D B A Stowe Away Golf, one twenty one White Pond Road, on premises, wine and malt and common victrola. Three, Nick Rush Spirits Inc., D B A Colonial Spirits of Stowe, one seventeen Great Road, package store, all alcohol. Four, A L and B C, eight Hudson Road, package store, all alcohol. Five, Robert Page the Third LLC, D B A Butternut Farm Golf Club, one fifteen Wheeler Road, on premises, all alcohol and common victrola. Six, Wedgwood Country Club of Stowe Inc., D B A Wedgwood Pines Country Club, two fifteen Harvard Road, on premises, all alcohol and common victrola. Seven, J Salamon Enterprises Inc., D B A Russell's Convenience Store of Stowe, three ninety Great Road, package store, wine and malt. Eight, The Airfield Cafe Inc., D B A Nancy's Airfield Cafe, three oh two Boxborough Road, on premises, all alcohol and common victrola. Nine, Red River Rock Inc., D B A Red Ginger Restaurant, one seventeen Great Road, on premises, all alcohol and common victrola. Ten, Twenty Nine Culinary LLC, D B A Nance Market, two seventy one Great Road, package store, wine and malt. And eleven, Honey Pot Hill Orchards LLC, one thirty eight Sudbury Road, Farmer Winery Pouring Permit, wine and malt and common victrola.
Second. Um, any questions, discussion on any of these, any and all? Megan, you all, you all good? All good, all right.
Can you make one comment?
Yes, sure.
So I will just comment because I have had some questions. Um, there are two licenses, um, The Airfield Cafe and uh J Malone and Sons at Stowe Away Golf that we will approve, um, but we will not be releasing the liquor license until they um have a certificate of occupancy. Um, Nancy's Airfield is under renovation, and as Stowe Away Golf is sort of in a holding pattern until they decide what to do. They've both decided to retain their liquor license pending the future of their businesses. So they will be approved, but until they have a um occupancy by the building commissioner, we will hold on to the physical license.
Um, if there's no other questions, I will call follow up votes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. And then we have the common victrola license renewals for twenty twenty two.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the town's common victrola licenses for twenty twenty two for Dunkin' Donuts at Stowe Golf Station, six twenty sixth Great Road, and Delta Epsilon Inc., D B A Stowe House of Pizza, one fifty sixth Great Road. Further, I move to renew the common victrola licenses, license for the Stowe Cafe at one eighteen Great Road and Emma's Cafe, one seventeen Great Road, pending satisfactory receipt of all required documentation and outstanding taxes.
Second. Any further comments, Denise, on these? Just the last two, still waiting for some information?
Um, so we have all of the documentation from Emma's. Um, we have not received a renewal from Stowe Cafe. Um, Phoebe has spoken to them several times. Um, we did this last year until I actually went there on December twenty eighth and received an application. Um, and the latter two both owe us outstanding taxes. So um, the licenses will be released upon receipt of that.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Great, thank you. Um, okay, and then, I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. Okay, then the last is a class two license, car license renewal uh for Great Road Fuel. So we did a number of renewals in our previous meeting, but this was one that we were waiting for the final paperwork, and now we have it.
Correct.
So, um, Mr. Salvi, will you make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to renew the town's class two license, licenses for the following businesses. Well, I move to renew the town's class two license for the following business for twenty twenty two, Great Road Fuels, three sixty eight Great Road.
Second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
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 That is unanimous. Great. Okay, so uh, we're, we've got two sets of meeting minutes, uh, November twenty third and December seventh. So let's first go to the regular meeting on November twenty third. Corrections, comments, changes? I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of the November twenty third meeting as drafted.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous?
That's abstaining.
I wasn't here.
Oh, you, that's right, abstaining, right. Um, and then for the December seventh. I had one question, just, and I don't know if it's necessary, but under the ARPA um discussion when we were talking about the giving you discretionary, did we want to say more about? We talked about it being particularly for projects that had been approved, but the bids had come in over budget. Is that too restrictive to that? I just, I wasn't sure if we should include that as part of the discussion in the minutes? Or just leave, if, if people are comfortable with the way it was written to basically say um discretionary funds, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to see if everybody was on the same page. Any other, any comments on that? Yes.
I think I'm comfortable with it as written, uh, because I think we're going to see the report that comes back, you know, to us and.
Right.
I think we'll fully be able to make people happy with those being spent very wonderfully and wisely.
Yes, great, okay. All right, then I, um, if nobody else has any comments, uh, take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes of December seventh as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all right, unanimous. Great. Um, there was a lot of correspondence. Any comments or questions? I wanted to thank Carol Lynn, who is our working hard representative to the Green Advisory Committee for getting us the minutes of their first couple meetings, so we'll be talking to them at the first meeting in January. They'll be doing a presentation on where they're at, so look forward to hearing from them. Any other comments? Okay. Last, uh, last motion. I think we're done.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you.
Holidays.
See you in twenty twenty two.